So, welcome to the regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission, and we will get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any staff announcements or agenda changes today?
I'm Chair, Manager of the Commission, and no, there are none. Thank you.
Then we will open the hearing up for public comments that can be on any subject that is of interest to the Planning Commission but not on the agenda today. Is there anyone online or here who would like to make a general public comment?
There's no online comment at this time.
Thank you. So we will close that portion of the agenda, move on to the consent agenda consisting only of the meeting minutes from July 27, 2023.
Well, I don't know. The question is, can people who are not present at the meeting approve the minutes?
No. So then we have to continue. So we're going to have to ask Michael to...
Watch the meeting?
Watch the meeting, I guess. Then, or dawn, or both.
The Commissioner is saying it's still officially, I'm ever...
No. I don't, that's... Oh, okay. Well, I got in a message from him saying he has.
Oh, okay.
I gotta, I gotta, will be, I don't know.
So I don't think he's going to be back. I don't think so either. That was my understanding.
Unfortunately, it takes three people watching the meeting to make their minutes accurate.
Yes.
Hope you have a wonderful time.
Yes, enjoy, guys.
Looking forward to it, I always do.
And those are just on our website on the past meetings on the Planning Commission, okay. After I check my calendar.
It was not a long meeting, so it should not be that onerous. So, do we need to vote to continue this to our next meeting?
I make a motion to continue it to the next meeting.
All in favor? Aye. Alrighty, thank you. And then we will get started with our first item, item 1, 2022-020 zoning amendment and conditional use permit for California Waste Recovery Systems. And Madeline?
Good morning. Give me just a second to share my screen here. Alright. Good morning. Project number 2022-020, this is a zoning amendment and conditional use permit for the California Waste Recovery Systems, which I'll be referring to as Cal Waste. So the applicant is requesting a zoning amendment from Business Park, which is M4, to General Industrial, which is M2, and approval of a conditional use permit to expand operations at the existing Cal Waste Solid Waste Facility Transfer Station in Valley Springs. Proposed operations will increase the permitted volume of materials received each day, upgrading from the meeting volume to a large volume transfer station to establish a method to divert organic and other recyclable materials from landfills, including food waste, recovered wood, inert materials, metals, and co-collected residential organic waste. The subject property, APN040004021, is located at 3524 Double Springs Road, just northwest of the intersection of State Route 12 and 26 in the community of Valley Springs. So the existing operations, the project site has been operating as a transfer station since 2018 under a solid waste facility permit from the Environmental Management Agency for the purpose of consolidating and transferring solid waste to permitted out-of-county disposal facilities. The facility currently accepts mixed municipal waste and green materials. Cal Waste Collection trucks enter the site, which you can see is accessed here off of Double Springs Road. There is a gate at the entrance, and then the large building in the center of the parcel is the 14,000 square foot transfer station. The trucks back up into, up to concrete bunkers to dump their loads onto a concrete slab, and a front-end motor pushes the waste into the open rear doors of a transfer trailer that's backed into a loading dock, which you can see on the south side of that structure. Currently, operations peak at about 21 vehicles per day, and there are no general public or self-haul vehicles accepted. So a transfer station for municipal refuse and recycling centers for paper cans and glass are permitted by right in the M4 zone. However, a transfer station for other than municipal refuse and recycling centers handling materials other than paper cans and glass is a conditional use in the M2 zone. So Planning Staff determined that based on review of Cal Waste's current solid waste facility permit and the fact that the proposed operations will include a construction and demolition processing area for recovered wood and inert materials and metals, this transfer station will be processing more than just municipal refuse and recycling more than just paper cans and glass. Therefore, it was determined that a zoning amendment to M2 and a conditional use permit would be required. So this is the site plan showing the entire parcel. It's, there's kind of a lot going on here, and I'm sorry, this is not the clearest image, but you can see the access off of Double Springs Road and the main building in the center there, that's the transfer station. The area that is going to be having additional changes are what is shown in red. So currently, the transfer station accepts a hundred, a little less than 100 tons per day of waste, and they are going to increase that to 250 tons per day. So the site plan showing the area where within the parcel the improvements are proposed, we've got the construction and demolition processing line and tipping area, which is areas A and E, installation of a concrete wall to close off a section of the processing area, so, which is C, an outdoor concrete block bunker for storage and recyclables, which is area D, and then commercial packer vehicles that collect and haul the commercial organics will unload the organics inside the transfer station in the designated bunker, which is shown here as B. A front-end motor will push the organics into the open rear doors of a transfer trailer, just similar to what they do currently, that is backed into the loading dock in the same manner, and the organic waste can be stored up to 48 hours before being transferred to a permitted off-site compost facility, which helps to reduce orders. So the number of vehicles per day traveling to the site would increase from a peak of 21 to 84 vehicles per day. The anticipated maximum traffic includes 42 light-duty vehicles, including self-haul pickups and passenger vehicles, 30 medium-duty vehicles, including commercial collection vehicles, and 12 heavy-duty vehicles, which includes the transfer trucks. And there's also the potential that the increase in permitted capacity will require in addition to three to five new employees at the facility daily. These vehicles would utilize the adjacent roadways in the vicinity, Double Springs Road and State Route 26 and 12, which are designated as arterial roadways in the County General Plan and circulation element and are obviously accommodated for high-traffic flows. The subject parcel is currently designated in the general plan as industrial. Typical uses include light and heavy industrial activities such as processing, packaging, machinery repair, fabricating, distribution, warehousing and storage, research and development, public and quasi-public uses, and other similar and compatible uses. The surrounding land uses that are existing immediately north includes the PG&E Valley Springs substation. There is also undeveloped land. To the east is a storage yard beyond which is the State Route 26. South of the site is the Toynon Smart Storage Self-Storage Facility and undeveloped land and Highway 12, and immediately west is undeveloped land. The subject parcel is zoned M4, which is intended to provide a zone for comprehensive employment-generating development. The M4 zone is designed to accommodate a master-planned or development-agreement-based business park that centers around basic employment-generating businesses and accessory and support services, and to provide area for commerce, industry, and industry in community centers, community and special planning areas, and the prime industrial corridor. The proposed M2 zone is intended to provide areas for general industrial land use. All enumerated uses permitted and conditional in the M1 zone are permitted by right in the M2 zone. This includes a variety of industrial manufacturing, service businesses, retail, and public uses. In addition, the M2 zone allows for more intensive manufacturing uses with approval of a CUP. But the site is already fully developed with the Cal Waste Transfer Station, and no additional or future uses are proposed. And although this action would create an M2 zone parcel surrounded by M4 zone parcels, this industrial area really, as you can see here, it contains a mix of all of the zones. And as the current use of the parcel won't change, it's only the capacity of the transportation transfer station that is being proposed here. This will not affect the comprehensive employment-generating development already on-site and within the surrounding area. So the application was circulated to various county departments, local and public state agencies, requesting comments relative to the request. During the 30-day review period, comments were received from Caltrans, Environmental Management, and Public Works. And there was also one email that was received from an adjacent landowner after the review period. Caltrans submitted comments requesting additional information regarding the vehicles that will be entering and exiting the facility. A response was sent explaining that the anticipated maximum traffic at the project site at 84 vehicles per day with the aforementioned vehicle types, and after reviewing misinformation, Caltrans responded that they had no further comments or questions. Comments received from Environmental Management, including just their general conditions for permits such as an authority to construct them, air pollution control, COOPA permit as needed for any hazardous materials, which there will be none, and the applicant is also obviously required to have an active and current full solid waste facilities permit for the proposed solid waste operations prior to commencing. Comments received from the Public Works Department included conditions requiring that the project meet all applicable requirements of the county road ordinance, the encroachment ordinance, the grading and drainage ordinance, and the road impact mitigation ordinance. And in addition, one email was received from an adjacent landowner to the southeast, which is a vacant parcel that is part of the industrial subdivision. The comment included a list of concerns, primarily regarding the loss of value to their parcel due to public health, hazardous materials, odor, pests, and increased traffic. The Cal Waste Facility currently operates under a solid waste facilities permit, as I mentioned, which really regulates the site for compliance with state standards and county standards. Daily inspections by the operator are conducted, and monthly inspections are conducted by Environmental Health, which would identify any violations or nuisance conditions and require corrective actions. Also, storage of organics can't exceed 48 hours before they're transferred to a permitted off-site composting facility, which would reduce the potential for objectionable odors from the material storage, as well as vectors and general nuisances. The Commenters' Parcel is also accessed off of Freedom Way, which you can see here just to the west of the site. So the increase in traffic at the project site won't be passing by the adjacent landowner's parcel, and so really the increase in traffic won't be affecting this parcel at all. So as proposed, this project conforms to the general plan is consistent with general plan goal PF3 of the public facilities element, which encourages cost-effective integrated solid waste management and systems emphasizing waste reduction and recycling. The project will provide the public with an additional self-haul and recycling option. In addition, implementation measure C1B from the land use element requires that the county favorably consider projects which minimize greenhouse gases, which you are all very familiar with now. SB, sorry, Senate Bill 1383 establishes methane emissions reduction targets in a statewide effort to reduce emissions of short-lived climate pollutants. The purpose of expanding this facility is really to provide additional options to divert organic and other recyclable materials from the landfills, which is in line with both state and local greenhouse gas reduction goals. So pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, an initial study and negative declaration was prepared by DeNovo Planning Group and circulated from June 23 to July 30, 2023. The comment period was extended, it's normally 30 days, but it was extended as DeNovo updated the noise section to include an acoustical analysis of the proposed construction and demolition processing line. This update did not require recirculation of the document as this new information was added to make a small modification as project impacts to noise remained less than significant, there were no mitigations needed. The staff report also states that no comments were received to the initial study, which is not correct. I have included comments to you this morning, and there are some available here for the public at the front. There were comments that were received from Cal Recycle, Caltrans, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. DeNovo made some minor revisions to the document to address these comments instead of drafting a formal response letter. So comments from the Water Board consisted of their standard boilerplate letter regarding regulations and permitting, with really no specific comments to the initial study. The letter from Cal Recycle commented on the air quality section specifically to the statement made that an odor impact minimization plan would be required for compostable material handling operation to minimize odors. However, Cal Recycle stated that the proposed operations would not require the preparation of such a plan as this is not a composting facility, so the language in that section was omitted. And Caltrans also requested clarification on how the increase in the number of vehicles traveling to the facility per day would ultimately reduce vehicle miles traveled overall. DeNovo included additional language that the project would reduce the distance required for individual patrons to dispose of waste as Rock Creek landfill is located in Milton, which is 18 miles from the subject parcel. So this is offering an alternative disposal site for residents. So in conclusion, the project as proposed conforms to the applicable goals and policies of the County General Plan in Title 17. The proposed M2 zone is a consistent zone in the industrial land use designation. The project is found to be compatible with the surrounding commercial and industrial land uses and zoning in the general vicinity. The subject property is adequate in land area to accommodate the proposed use and was found to have safe and adequate access to the site with no improvements required. The conditional use permit is conditioned for the protection of public health, safety, and welfare. Although there was one objection to the approval of this project from an adjacent neighbor, there's no major development or substantially new use that's being proposed as part of this application as it's an expansion of an existing facility, which is regularly inspected by the county for compliance. And the negative declaration revealed that this project will have a less-than-significant effect on the environment. And there is a representative here from Cal Waste if you have questions for the applicant.
Are there any questions for Madeline before we give the applicant an opportunity?
First, I just want to commend you again for such a thorough
Thank you.
report, and I have one question.
Sure.
That is on page 13 of the, of the staff report, and then it's echoed on page 4 of the supplemental resolution. It says, "In addition, the Commenters' Parcel is accessed off of Freedom Way beyond the entrance to the Cal Waste Facility. Therefore, the increased traffic at the project site will not be passing by the Commenters' Parcel." I agree that he's, he's on Freedom Way, it's not going to be passing, but I didn't understand this beyond the entrance to the Cal Waste Facility. As far as I know, Double Springs Road is a, is a two-way road, so these trucks could be approaching from either direction.
True. I just, so, I don't have a pointer here, I'm sorry. Do you see where the storage units are, the long parallel, four parallel buildings just south of the Cal Waste site at the end of Freedom? And then the parcel that is to the east of that, really right at the junction of 12 and 26?
I'm not following.
They're vacant.
Vacant.
My goodness.
It's this one, right here. So trucks are coming in, entering Cal Waste Facility here, and yes, they're coming in this direction. They're not, this parcel is accessed here, it's not accessed up the block, right, that is going. So they would have to come through Freedom. So I just meant that the trucks and the vehicles that are coming to the facility won't be passing by the entrance.
I understand, but would your statement make perhaps more sentences if you just took out the words "beyond the entrance to the Cal Waste Facility"?
Yep.
Okay. I'll be suggesting that, I might get to the resolution.
Because it's in the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, would the applicant like to speak?
Good morning. I'm Neil Edgar. I'm a permitting and compliance consultant, and here on behalf of Cal Waste, just wanted to emphasize the great job that the planning staff did, very thorough report, and also the consultant. This is exactly the kind of project that the county needs to be able to comply with SB 1383. This, which currently the county has a rural exemption, so counties under a certain population density are allowed to extend their deadline for compliance, but that exemption expires in December of 2026. So by the time that exemption expires, this facility could be up and ready and provide the services needed to divert organic materials away from the landfilling, which is what the state is asking us to do. Are there particular questions about the project, or?
I have just some detail as far as the, it's going to be open to the public during all of its opening hours, or?
There are limited hours that will be identified during the permitting process with Environmental Management Agency. They're typically not, it's not a 24/7 operation, so...
No, I mean, if it's open for the large vehicles, is it going to be open at the same time for the public?
Typically, the commercial vehicles are earlier in the day, so in most of the facilities, we work on that permitting. That, that may start at 6 o'clock in the morning or something like that, but the general public, there's not a lot of efficiency in using that facility before 7 or 8, so usually those hours are condensed because Cal Waste will have to staff the facility and make sure that the in-grass and e-grass for the general public is done safely, and also to keep it generally away from those commercial vehicles, again, for public safety, so...
Sure, the members of the public are going to be very happy to have something closer to home.
Except that it will be paid because you're a private company.
Correct, it will be...
Not like our transfer stations.
Yes, there'll be a tipping fee for materials that are delivered there. So there are some trade-offs for the, what you save on gas to travel across the county to get it disposed of at the landfill. Also, that disposal option is something that we're, that the state is trying to dissuade, and you know, certain materials like wood and the organic materials that are being proposed to be diverted under this facility plan is, are something that are no longer intended to be hauled to the landfill, and the landfill operation will have to have some last check for whether or not those organics are arriving there and how much in order to be compliant with Cal Recycle's requirements.
And with the, with the peak of 84 vehicles, is that, would that include an estimate of the public's participation?
Correct. The public, the light-duty and heavy-duty vehicles that Madeline explained in her presentation, those are generally intended to be self-haul vehicles, either trucks or vehicles hauling trailers. So those are the, those are the light-duty vehicles, and then flatbeds or other types of medium-sized trucks that are bringing in material from demolition jobs, for instance.
But the total number of vehicles then is expected to peak at 84?
Correct. That'll be the total permitted limit regardless of whether they're commercial or residential or self-haul vehicles.
Thank you.
So, but that's an estimate, you're not counting vehicles per day, right?
No, they are counting vehicles. Also, every vehicle that comes into the facility is documented, and the amount of waste that's received at the facility has to be weighed, and there are, the permit that will be issued by Environmental Management...
But you wouldn't be turning away trucks if you got to 84?
No, yes, yes.
Would you?
Yes, you would, or you'd be in violation of the permit, so...
Yeah, that's interesting.
It'll be a question of whether or not it's that popular, and how many vehicles actually arrive at the facility.
It seems like you were actually estimating around 50.
Yeah, I think 84 is, 84 is the peak, and that, that's the limit that can be approved under the permits based upon the action you take here. So that was what was reviewed in the secret document, and that is the absolute limit at the top. Likely to be somewhere less than that, particularly when they start up those operations.
So earlier you talked about this diverting material from the landfill, but when you go to Rock Creek now, it can be separated. So is yours, is this operation going to be a mini Rock Creek where the wood would be processed like some of the transfer stations now, and chipped, and then hauled off, and so how is it?
Well, the, so the two separate operations that are clearly identified are the construction and demolition of debris recycling. So those materials would be processed, and wood and metals and recoverable materials would be taken out of that waste that generally comes mixed in debris boxes that you see on construction sites or is mixed in trucks. The organic waste is intended to be delivered separated, and then that material would just be transferred in a transfer truck and hauled to a, an other facility, a composting facility or another facility that can process it, clean it up, and make a usable soil amendment out of it.
So at this site, the, there's the basic separation of the types of things that are being disposed, but the processing of them occurs elsewhere?
Generally, that's true, except for the construction and demolition debris. The other, there were a number of bunkers that were shown on the drawing. Those are designed to have materials actually separated and placed into those bunkers, so the material's already going to be somewhat separate from those operations. It's just the, it's the mixed construction and demolition debris that is going to be processed on-site.
And what will that processing be?
Those are typically a mechanical sort line with a, with a rubber belt about five to six feet wide that takes the material up on a platform, and there are mechanical pieces of equipment that will help separate out by size. So the smaller refined materials generally get separated out early. Also, bigger pieces like sheet cardboard or larger pieces of metals or wood that are not, that might jam up the line, but once the materials are on to the sorting platform, they are physically, have manual sorting as another part of that. So you can have workers up there sorting the debris, and so it's separated into those categories that can be sent for reprocessing at other facilities.
Are we going to receive any extra points if we do this for the greenhouse gas initiative, which we've agonized over for a long, long time?
Absolutely. A lot of bonus points that come with keeping wood out of the landfill and also the organic waste, the food material that comes from, particularly from commercial enterprises, so restaurants, grocers, those type of operations that have large volumes of, of organic debris. They're, they're a pretty significant contributor to methane development at the landfill, and will keep the landfill from having to deal with a lot of controls which seem to be coming down the, down the way. Right now, they have some gas system controls to collect gas and keep it from leaking, keep methane from leaking into the atmosphere. Those controls are looking towards being more robust, and there'll be more requirements coming from the Air Resources Board, I think, as we move forward.
Will that be something they'll be requiring at this facility at some point?
I would expect at some point, that may be 10 years from now or so, but there, there are, there's a national effort right now. US EPA is looking at their methane rule. I would expect at some point, uh, that may be ten years from now or so, but there, the, there are, there's a national effort right now, US EPA is looking at, uh, at their methane rule and how to get more landfills to reduce the methane that's being emitted, and California's usually out ahead of the federal government.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, we'll open the public comment portion, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? Gosh, you guys are awfully quiet and well behaved.
What?
Is there anybody?
There's no one.
Thank you, okay, so we'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to the commissioners for some discussion and further questions at the applicant or Adeline or Gabriel? Does anybody have any?
I, I'm actually just curious, how many points do we get? Because we're so close, right?
We, we don't, we can't use them in our current plan, no, it, we're not requiring this, we're not funding it as the county, it's a private enterprise, however, long-term it will benefit us.
It will help the environment.
It will.
It does.
And it might help us in the future when we're documenting.
Yeah.
And, and Madam Chair, just clarification to Commissioner Parker's questions, uh, our current, uh, GHG measures actually put us well within our SB, uh, thirty-two requirements, so initially, the first report we got, we were short, now we are there, so.
Thank you.
Madam, hi, hi, this is probably an unfair question, but we don't have any way of knowing whether or not the landowner who submitted that comment purchased a property prior to Coway's putting their facility there, correct?
I do not know, I did not check to see any kind of deed.
Well, that's okay, I didn't, I don't want to put you, I'm just curious.
No, I don't know.
Was Coway's facility there?
I spoke to him on the phone, and then he submitted the email to just really spell out all of his concerns, and the only thing that he had mentioned to me was that he was trying to sell the parcel, and the prospective buyers were not interested in buying it just because of the proximity to the Coway's transfer station.
Um, Commissioner Chumente, the, the transfer station's been there for a while.
Since, yeah, two thousand eighteen.
Since eighteen.
Right, so, yeah, so the only issue here is there is a modification to the existing facility.
Right, no, no, no.
So if the, if the property was purchased prior to twenty eighteen, there had to be knowledge that there was a transfer station next door, so, but we don't know when he purchased the property.
Or whether or not when Coway's went in there in twenty eighteen, whether or not the person, if he had that piece of property, filed a complaint at that particular, at the initiation.
It was allowed by.
By who?
Right, at the time, and he, his piece of property is an industrially zoned piece of property, surrounded by industrial properties.
Exactly.
And his complaint is that it could limit his ability to do residential or entertainment options.
I know, which, all right, yeah.
It's a little bit.
No, I, I think it just speaks to when people buy a piece of property, as we have found here, that they don't always know what they can and can't do with it, exactly.
Al- also, uh, there's, there's speculation on how the operation will work, like, they're, they have a lot of concerns that because this stuff turns over quickly, there.
Exactly.
May not be as big of a concern if.
Right, right, right.
Anything else?
I'll have some comments on the resolution.
Well, of course. We're gonna talk about the resolution in a minute, I'm just making sure everybody's had their questions answered.
Oh, God.
Okay, then let's go ahead and take a look at the resolution, and, and I'll let you go ahead and start with the simple stuff.
And there are two, so please just tell me which one you're looking at.
Thirteen, I think.
Okay, we're starting with thirteen, um, on the first page, we need to take out the site to public comment, the, uh, fourth, whereas.
And the date on mine says the fourteen.
Oh, good catch.
Oh, goodness. I'm gonna let him handle it.
Then I would suggest, uh, since coming into this, I didn't know what C and D was, uh, number two, under evidence, about halfway down, there's, there's a site to, uh, reference to C and D processing, I think there we should spell it out, construction and demolition.
Oh, gosh, yes.
And then, then have in, in parentheses, the C and D. On page four is where I was referring to earlier, um, the end of the incomplete paragraph at the top of the page, just need to take out the words beyond the entrance to the Coway's facility.
Got it.
Then, maybe I still need education on this, um, general conditions one dash two talks about it will expire if not validated prior to December thirty-third, and then it says to activate this permit, should that be validate instead of activate? We're talking about two different things.
Yes. It's the same thing we talked about.
Oh, well, I, I forget what we talked about.
Well. Just needing consistent language for that.
Yeah, then, uh, condition three dash two, which starts with, uh, CUPA permits, I think we need to spell out certified unified program agency, and then in parentheses, I don't know if you say cupa, kappa?
Cupa, yeah.
Then on the final page of the resolution, um. I had some questions about the, the fifty vehicles per day, but I, that's, the way it reads now is that that's really, that, that is what's in the application, but that is about what they're expecting, is fifty vehicles a day, but then, uh, I think, so leave that in, but then an increase from a peak of twenty-one vehicles per day up to a peak of eighty-four vehicles per day. Then on the other one, other resolution, it's just the public comment, uh, reference on the first page, uh, and they got the date right there.
And then no, no comments were received, which you've already corrected on both of them.
And, uh, let's see.
And Commissioner Ladish covered all mine.
Oh, very.
Does anybody else have anything?
Very thorough.
Okay.
Well, I feel an obligation with, uh, Commissioner Wooster, no longer here.
You couldn't sound like missing commas or semicolons.
I know, I remember, we're letting things slip by.
Yes, so I believe we are ready for the recommendation.
Okay, staff recommends the planning commission recommend adoption of the negative declaration by the board of supervisors, and through planning commission resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one three as amended, recommending the board of supervisors approve conditioning use permit twenty twenty-two dash zero two zero per the site development plan in the resolution, and through resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one four as amended, recommending the board of supervisors and zoning of APN zero four zero dash zero zero four dash zero two one from Business Park to General Industry as shown in exhibit A of the resolution based on the findings and conditions therein.
I make a motion to approve as amended.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
And this is a.
This is going to the board of supervisors, this one?
Yes.
Yes, so it's gonna go forward, and so it's, it's not appealable at this stage.
Exactly, it's a recommendation to the board, so you'll, you'll be back here in this room. Thank you.
I did certainly, I'll introduce myself, I'm Dave Vacarosa with Coway, and I appreciate your support in this project, it will help our county, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, thank you.
Nice job.
Okay, so we are, item two, which is a little going back a couple weeks here, item two, twenty twenty-three dash zero four eight, Barber Day Appeal of Staff Decision Continued from nine fourteen twenty-three to finalize the resolution, and our new resolution.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, as you rightfully spoke, um, at the last planning commission meeting, uh, the planning commission decided to have a hybrid decision on this project, uh, two movable storage units, uh, were, um, submitted, permits for two movable storage units were submitted for approval, uh, the commission felt like one of those storage units would be compatible to an ag use, and because the applicants were bringing in, uh, some, uh, long-horned cattle, they qualified for a agricultural, uh, use on their property. So the resolution at the time was to deny and uphold planning director's decision, I mean, planning staff's decision, but, uh, I think the, uh, resolution, the current resolution would state that the planning commission approves in part, uh, and it would stipulate exactly what it is that the planning commission approves, and then denies the rest of the application, and the applicant had been in touch with me during the week, kind of wondering, what are we doing, can I go and get my permit, and I said, no, we need to get this resolution passed before he goes and gets his permits for, for the structure, thank you.
Does anybody have any comments on the proposed resolution?
I, I do, but it only because it was fed to me by somebody else, uh, on the, the be it resolved, uh, phrase or paragraph, it should read, be it resolved that the planning commission grants in part and denies in part, appeal twenty twenty-three oh four eight from the planning department's denial of zoning clearance for two movable storage sheds, and I don't need to read that slowly because I've already given the language.
Yes, that's true.
It, it's a clarification.
Yeah, and, and I just want to state, I, I appreciate the clarity of the, of the statement on the, the evidence on the second.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's, that really helped me refresh my recollection of what we did.
Yeah, it sounds, uh, it's very tightly described in, in order, so you can see how we got there, so, thank you. Okay, well, we, I believe we need to open up public comment on the approval of the resolution, Annette, is there anybody online?
There's no online.
Thank you, so we will open and close the public comment, I don't, because the, uh, appellant is not here, we won't hear from them, so we are ready for the recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, staff recommends that the planning commission, uh, approves a resolution granting appeal twenty twenty-three zero forty-eight with respect to zoning clearance for construction of a shed, supporting agricultural use and upholding planning staff's denial of zoning clearance for two movable sheds supporting residential use on a vacant, undeveloped parcel, nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen point ninety acres are, are zoned at thirty-five fifty-nine Stagecoach Road in Coppropolis.
Resolution has amended?
As amended.
And will we adopt the resolution as amended?
If, if you, um, did, did you re, did you review the entire meeting?
Why?
I mean, not, you didn't watch the meeting?
No, I didn't.
Then I think. You should have stayed. All right, so would you like?
I make it second?
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three, zero, one, and one. You guys are missing a bunch of me, I can't count to five. All right, thank you very much, everybody, on that one, and we are on to our informational items.
Madam Chair.
Are we expecting Gina?
I don't know if she's online, uh, to join by Zoom.
We're running over here because she didn't expect this to go that quickly.
Absolutely, maybe, uh, Annette, um, is Gina online waiting to get in?
She is not.
I didn't know what she was gonna be doing today since our first informational meeting is.
All right, I, I guess you just provide.
Talking about the schedule.
Schedule. Yeah, could you take a five-minute recess so that I can figure out exactly what?
What I would suggest is that we take a long enough recess for the commissioners who have not read these materials, give them a chance to.
Okay.
Read this material, and also, if you could provide us with a clean copies of the, uh.
Yes.
Plan itself.
Right, thank you, so.
Okay, so fifteen minutes, everybody? Okay.
It's okay.
Ask your questions.
So, I just, I'm curious about the format, I'm starting to read the material, as you know, I've been sending you some emails, um, so are, are you gonna tell us which, which sections, you know, what do you perceive these days to, to look like?
You, oh, the, the study sessions?
The study sessions.
So we're basically gonna take, um, the, the section of code that you're reviewing now, we're gonna break it down into smaller components, and we'll be talking about those as we're going along, we've got a full, um, you'll have a staff report coming to you, um, that Julie and I and Gabriel have been, uh, conversing about, it's gonna be, um, fairly detailed, you know, trying to explain the changes that we've made and kind of why we made them, um, in addition, I'm, I'm going to provide you with a copy of the, um, general plan implementation policy and implementation measures, and where you can find that we've incorporated that into the code, um, as an attachment to the staff report, um, that's hopefully gonna go out next week, but, um, that.
I, I haven't seen the draft, I just.
You haven't seen the draft yet, because it's not done, we've been, we've been, we've been dedicating all of our time, unfortunately, well, or fortunately, to, um, the, um, to developing the parcel list, um, since this was, um, uh, recently included in this process, um, we weren't prepared for it, uh, in the beginning, so we're just kind of trying to play catch-up, um, I had communication with GIS today, and I think we finally got the whole list, um, compiled, um, and the notices are all, uh, to the private property owners, they are copied, um, folded, stuffed, sealed, and ready for, um, labels to be mailed, um, we have.
What's gonna be the notice there?
Uh, the notice of study session, um, the board, um, requested that we send out, uh, specific notice of the study session to all the property owners, which ends up to be roughly five thousand fifty-two-ish parcels.
I'm not sure everybody else knows the map is going to be included at this phase, I knew because I had talked to you, but.
Yeah, I thought we discussed it at the, um, when I, um, when.
Did you guys?
At the announcement, but, um, I can back up a little. Yeah, so since. Since Commissioner Parker was not hearing and Commissioner Latice is looking at me like I have no clue what you're talking about. We'll go ahead and and I'll back it up a bit, so initially we were just planning on. On addressing, you know, reviewing the draft update to the zoning code itself. Understanding that some of the changes that are proposed to be made are eliminations of a couple of base zones and as well as some overlay zones. So obviously that will result in zoning amendments of specific parcels in the county. Our. Initial intent was to come behind the adoption of the actual text. With a cleanup and a zoning amendment to actually rezone all of those parcels in a separate action. After conversing with. Counsel and and our CEO and. We made the determination to include the zoning amendment or aka zoning map. Concurrent with the with the text amendment. So we weren't prepared for that in the beginning, so we're trying to play catch-up and and get it all brought together, so. Our main focus for the last two weeks has been has been shoring up this list of all the parcels that are going to be. Rezoned and I'm not gonna go into detail, but there's some. There's some issues between, you know, the Assessor and GIS, but we're getting that all together and and I think we're down to forty-four. Parcels now that we just have to confirm and we'll be ready to go, so.
It's really impressive.
It's been a lot of work, yeah, and and I owe a lot to GIS. Specifically Doug, you know, in addition to Dan Reyes, they have just done. A remarkable job at at last minute notice and they've really stepped up to the plate, so I really appreciate what they're doing for us.
This is being mailed out now, just.
Yes.
As it started.
Yes.
When the study.
So because this is such a large project. The legal requirement for notification is actually very minimal, it's simply just. A notice of the public hearing in the local newspaper and some posting of the notice.
Display ad.
A display ad, thank you. But after the general plan update process. The board. Because of that, the board wished that we asked that we give individual notice to those property owners that would be subject to a zone change. And. In addition to that, they wanted the notice to be given. Prior to the actual public hearing. They wanted the property owners to be able to participate or be notified of the study session, so. We really had to kind of ramp it up, but we're there, so.
It's not that this was a boring, there was, there wasn't a meeting about this, there was. A conversation with the County Executive Officer, I was present for it and just based on. Her sense of where the board was on this and comments that she had heard over the months and about the general plan amendment, this was her judgment call?
Yeah.
Some recommendations.
And and we all agree, it's it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a good call, it's a, it's a, you know, a worthy, you know, decision and it's and it's. It's gonna pay off in the end. You know, so so that's where we are right now, so the notices are all ready to go out, we just have to sure up the list. Provide the mailing addresses. And get them out in the mail, so that will be going along concurrent with your review of the actual. Draft update, so what I just need you folks to do right now is to concentrate on the draft. The zoning amendment. Will kind of be running along with it, but it's not really something that's gonna be heavily discussed, probably maybe towards the end. But absolutely, it is more of an invitation for the public to become involved. We don't want people to be surprised at the last minute when there's zone changes and there's no more opportunity to participate.
So the. Notifications to the individual property owners whose zoning may be affected, are they being told your zoning is going to change from this zoning to this zoning?
Yes, so that's the second part of the notice, so the notice basically is saying. We've identified that as a result of the the proposed draft update to the county zoning code, your parcel. May change, the zoning of your parcel may change. And basically alerting them to the fact that there will be a change, more than likely, contact us. So the second part of this whole zoning map process is is that GIS is currently in the process of a GIS application or a public viewer. For people to be able to go on the website and take a look at their specific parcels. And be able to identify what the current zoning is and what the proposed zoning will be as a result of the.
And and look and see what the new proposed zoning description is.
Yes.
That's great.
And I think I may have asked you. Last time. But. So will their current zone, will it run concurrently with the new zone, so whatever they're doing on that piece of property, they can continue to do? And will only impact once they sell that piece of property? Will the new zoning then take effect?
No, so if there are uses that are being conducted on a on a parcel that would be. A non-conforming use subsequent to the adoption of the zone change in the code. They would be continued, they would be allowed to continue that, we we consider that to be a pre-existing legal non-conforming use. However, for those base zones that are changing, I went through and I I did some research on each and every parcel and. For instance, the RM zone is a rural home industry zone that is proposed to go away with the the draft, right? In addition to the zoning, the zoning was piggybacked along with a use permit. And it and it was, and the intent was to zone a piece of property for for a rural home industry. In addition, you had to get a use permit for the specific use. So out of the whole list of parcels that were zoned RM, only one parcel had continued, is still continuing today. To be in the business in which we originally permitted them. All the others have, you know, the businesses have gone away and they're using the parcels for nothing more than a residence. And so it doesn't really make any sense to keep them zoned RM. And like I said, for the one business that is still operating today under the original use permit, will be allowed to continue without any issues.
And a subsequent purchaser would be able to continue.
Yeah, the use permit runs with the land, yeah. Right. And so they've got an active use permit and it's active, you know, in perpetuity unless they suspend their their business and discontinue it for more than twelve months.
So I believe it's important, and thank you for contacting those folks and and explaining the process. But, you know, kind of anticipating what our audience is gonna look like. If all of that is explained to them ahead of time. Should we anticipate? A lot of. I mean, I I'm just curious about, I mean, because it is.
It's possible, absolutely, you know, so our staff is all is prepared, each and every one of us is prepared to start fielding these questions. We've already started to field questions, you know, as the word is getting out, people are a little nervous about what this proposed code actually is all about. So we're starting to get phone calls, it's not a significant amount of calls, but we are starting to field questions. And we'll continue throughout the process, and so. Our feeling is is that the more resources we have out there for people, hopefully they'll be able to help themselves, and if not, they can certainly call in and talk to any one of us. And we can walk them through, you know, the proposed changes. It's. Just one of those things, you know, we're just gonna be in this very awkward kind of a stage until this whole process is done and, you know.
I I believe because we are dealing with the map that we will draw out most people who have an interest because a lot, what we've seen in the past is people don't pay a lot of attention to the text side of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Like during the general plan, but when we dealt with the maps, they were here to talk about it.
Yes.
So I think this really will save us a lot in the long run, and it's the most fair thing that we could do. I I don't know that we'll have a huge turnout.
Maybe not to start with that, I'm curious for the study session. This is mainly to educate us and the public as to what's going on.
Yes. We're looking for your feedback.
You are looking for feedback?
Yes.
And and that, but that would not be a vote of a commission or any other sort of.
Not during the study session, so the study session is just that. It's your opportunity to, you know, to have questions, voice concerns, give us your comments. We will, we will compile all of your comments in addition to the public comments at the end. Martha and Gabriel and I and Julie will all meet again, you know, and we'll decide what needs to be changed.
Accommodated and what is not practical tonight.
So Commissioner Latice, I think you're asking whether this is the time to edit and stuff, it is the time to.
Yes, yes.
It is, because we're looking at coming up with a final draft, kind of like the final draft of the GHD measures, we're doing it in a study session format. Because we don't know yet what the full scope of what we're gonna have to notice. And what the full scope of any sequel work we have to do until we have the final.
Right.
Version from you, and at that point it'll be formalized and there will be the formal notice of public hearing and it'll come back.
As an action item.
Yes, yes, yes.
Good.
I will get to hear all those things that the people didn't say earlier. Because they weren't that interested in the informational items.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Back to my question, we'll know more of how to prepare for their first study session after we get staff reports, that will kind of outline the direction.
Yes, and and our consultant will will be available during the study sessions as well, and she's already prepared. A PowerPoint presentation and we will, we will be taking this line for line, so, you know, it's it's up to you as to how quickly we want to run through this. You know, certainly staff is game for, you know, whatever meetings that you want to, you know. Have to get through the material. But I think you'll find it's a pretty easy read.
Yeah. I have one question, and I may have the acronym wrong, I I read, I'm starting to read the binder and I read your, the the summary. But it's, I think it refers to TUDs, am I correct, it's. It says, like, is there a chart? At some point? That I keep seeing this, like, I thought it was TUD, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, and I can email you my specific question.
Yeah, please do.
But it seems like it refers to something. In it, and it's okay.
It's not, it's not coming to mind.
TP to a use permit?
TP.
That wouldn't be, right, I mean, it just seems like every. Every title has.
To be, you're not talking about the to be determined.
Oh, maybe that's what it means.
Sections.
Maybe that's what that means.
Yeah. Because it's, it's all throughout, yeah. It was this chart, yeah. So, yeah, so it's not there, yeah. So obviously, the, you know, the final, you know, everyone's had a look at it, you know. You know, we'll be able to apply those section numbers and and not to. Yeah. How is it? Can't find it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we're all prepared to start on.
We are prepared to start on October eleventh, that is a Wednesday, so. Dawn, I'm, I apologize you weren't here at the meeting that we had previously discussed, but there's been ample emails that have gone out to all of you. So hopefully you're reading those emails and keeping updated, but the room is reserved and the notices, the notice for the study session, which again was not a legal requirement, we're just doing that as as a courtesy. To the general public and out of respect for the board. That actually is being published in the Valley Springs News tomorrow and all the other notices of zone changes are going out at the latest tomorrow.
The meeting right here, right?
Yes.
I just also want to let the commission know that on the eighteenth, we do have a, I think a nine to four scheduled for that day.
Yes.
So I will, I have an administrative hearing that I thought would be quick and it's probably not gonna be quick. With the Assessment Appeals Board that day that I need to be there for, so I will not be here, I will probably come in sometime, you know, in the afternoon is my guess on that. And so if there's any questions that you have, for me, you can give me a piece of paper and between that and the next study session. I mean, obviously for me, if there's anything you want me to research, the more advanced notice I have, the better, but I'll go and watch the the meeting afterwards and see what I missed.
So so you're not saying that we have to cancel the meeting, that we can continue without you?
You don't have to have any meetings with me. It's just a little inefficient that way, yeah.
No, no, the commission can decide to.
Get canceled way in now or get in the way later. I know that I have a couple of dates that. I have late afternoon meetings. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to finish up by like three thirty.
Well, and again, that is entirely up to you guys, I have allotted those times from on the Wednesdays that we have a full day, I've reserved them from nine AM to four PM. So if you guys want, you know, if you've had absolutely enough of the zoning code review by two o'clock, then we knock off at two, you know.
Commission's eyes are crossed.
Yeah, yeah.
We're saying, no lunch for you guys, I have to.
If 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 for those, for those weeks that have a following day Planning Commission hearing scheduled. You know, if the if the agenda is light enough and you want to continue it, then certainly you can continue it to the next day. That was kind of the the thinking, at least my thinking of what would probably take place.
It's just gonna depend where it can be.
It's gonna depend on where you guys, how available you are, you know, and what the agendas look like. And again, you know, it's it's. It's up to you and how quickly we're gonna go through this.
But Gina, I'd want to say with all the work that you've done, I'm excited to get into this.
It is exciting.
You know, I don't feel like there's this huge. Unknown coming at.
Right.
You know what's going on. We will know what's going on and we very much appreciate. All that you've been doing for however long you've been doing about this and and with other people in the planning department.
Oh, everybody's involved. This is an all hands on deck kind of a process.
So it's my understanding that not every zoning amendment that we might like to see addressed will be included in this initial round. Because the emphasis is on making sure that we're in compliance with our general plan. And getting our new format in place and all of that.
So I.
I think, I think.
I'm not so sure.
Are you just talking about the scope of the changes? Oh, I mean, I. In order to get it done quickly, the emphasis from planning and the consultant was to. Do whatever can be done first within the scope of the general plan.
Right, yeah.
Without needing to prepare.
Correct, right.
So I, so the goal was to just get that stuff done first and anything that would require additional sequel work will be taken, usually those are gonna be the more controversial changes anyway. That require more discussion on a one, one by one basis.
Right, right.
That would be coming later, probably after, you know, possibly with some study sessions with the board on what what kind of direction they.
Yeah, so this is not a fix-all.
Right.
It's it's kind of a initial fix. Understanding that we will be following behind with more amendments.
Random things.
Yes.
But it will address everything that is necessary to bring our zoning ordinance into alliance with state.
State and federal requirements, yes. We have a. Um, we have, um, eliminated the very confusing, um, list of definitions and uses that didn't correlate. So Martha's done a really nice job with the code. Um, I have to say it reads a lot nicer. It's so much easier to find things. Um, I just like the organization. Um, so I think once you guys get into it, you're going to find it's, it's a lot more user friendly. Um, and I, you know, of course the general plan implementation is going to be a topic of discussion. You know, it's up to you to decide whether or not we've accurately captured all of those policies in the, in the code revisions. And, um, if not, then, you know, we'll see what else we can do to make things right. So that's.
And there's a, I want to more thing, and I think, tell me if I'm wrong on this. There's some of the pieces that require, some of the pieces of the zoning code where there is sort of state or federal preemption are going to be reviewed after your input by an outside, by.
Yes.
Um, Meteor Harnish, um, has a legal, um, division that.
Yes.
Is in conjunction with Martha Miller. And they are going to review for, I, I think that what they have in there right now, they're hoping is basically in compliance with state law. There are a couple of sections that were just taken from our existing, um, code. But will be reviewed before the final draft comes back for state and federal compliance.
Right.
So you are, you don't worry too much in what you're seeing now.
Don't go, we have to go do that research.
Right.
Right, right.
Done for us, uh, before the final draft comes back.
Yeah, perfect, yeah.
So, Dawn, you have.
Well, I was just gonna, I have a comment for this. This is a very large three ring binder. Can I anticipate, and it doesn't have much in.
There's two more sections to come.
That's what I was thinking.
Didn't want to overwhelm you.
Just overwhelming is the thing.
Sorry.
I have a feeling there was something else coming.
Yeah, I'll be giving you more material you can add to that binder. It'll be nice and full by the time we're done.
That's what I was hoping.
Yeah, so we broke the code, we broke the entire code down into three sections.
Okay.
Before you obviously use the first section, it's zone districts and use regulations. Uh, the second section we'll be reviewing will be, uh, countywide regulations. And the final, um, part of your review will be administration. So we're going to try to keep feeding you all of this, uh, as we're going along. Um, not to try to overwhelm you, but you know, and this is an important task. So if you think that we're hitting the road a little too quickly, then you know, you can put on the brakes and say, well, we need a little bit more time to review this. Uh, you know, maybe you want to go back and relook at another section that we've previously done. I don't know, it's up to you.
So the only other thing is originally we were going to do it in September.
Yes.
And now we're doing it in October.
Unfortunately, yes.
My schedule doesn't look the same in October.
Yeah.
And the reason is I ha, I've been threatening to take a vacation for about ten, ten years.
So what days will you be unavailable, Dawn? You want to go ahead and send those to me?
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta figure that out yet.
Okay.
But, um, and I know we're gonna be short.
Hopefully.
So it's gonna be a challenge.
Hopefully Supervisor Stopper is working on that as we speak.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll figure it out, but I've been wanting to go to Belize and, um, hoping to.
So this is just like, I'm a little salty.
I've been feeling well either, so.
Yeah, so if anyone has, you know, with the understanding that, um, obviously the intent is to, is to carry the study sessions through the month of October.
Every day and.
And more than likely we'll be pushing into November depending on, like I said, how quickly we get through the material. But I'm kind of anticipating that we'll roll into November. Um, so if there's anything in November that I'm not aware of, please just send me an email and I'll stick you on my calendar. And we'll just start, you know, a process of elimination as to what days are available for meetings.
Yeah, cause I think it's important that at least all four of us, if not.
Oh, absolutely.
Are, are there for every meeting.
Absolutely.
So who would stop you from having a meeting if I'm not here?
Yeah. I mean, I.
Maybe, maybe not. I think it depends.
Well, I think it depends on your.
If you have had a chance to look at it and can tell us whether you would have input on it or not.
But I, I.
Yeah.
I come all, I'm fully all input if I. I'm fully in favor of honoring your vacation, okay?
And I'm fully in favor of getting this done into the supervisors this year.
Yes, yes.
I've been looking forward to this for decades.
We are. Our current code is rather challenging, so.
Definitely don't want to hold things up.
So Michelle, having not been part of a commission study session, the format will be, we, we will talk first and then open it up to the public? Will it be kind of a free for all discussion? How will that work?
So I think it will depend on the attendance, what kind of enthusiasm we have from the public and how much they want to speak. But in general, it's an opportunity for us to hear, have a discussion among ourselves and with the staff and the consultants and Gabriel and Julie. But typically we have allowed the public to comment because we do want to hear early.
Right.
Why wait till late on it?
Okay, good.
If there's someone that we can see out there itching to speak, we will usually ask them.
Come up.
You know, and if you have, uh, folks out in your community that are showing some interest, um, and maybe not available or don't desire to come to an actual study session, encourage them to send us an email. Cause I, I'll be compiling all those, um, forwarding them on to the consultant. Um, so we'll have a, a nice stack of comments at the end of the process that we'll be able to, you know, hopefully incorporate some of that into the, into the draft as well.
Yeah. I, I think we can let you get back to work, to your staff.
We have a script left to do.
Thank you, Gina.
Oh, no, we went to appeal in Stickley.
Yeah.
The notices you're sending out now are still saying that we're going to get going on this in late summer, right?
Does the, does the notice still say we're going?
Yeah, I mean, you, but the notice you put in our binder that we could put on bulletin boards and stop talking about how this is going to start in late summer.
Oh, the, the flyers said late summer?
Flyers, yeah.
Well, I thought we updated that.
I don't know. I, I know that I.
No, the notice is brand new. I just, I just did the, I just drafted the notice and so, yeah, no, it.
Yeah.
It specifically is a notice notifying individual, individuals of the, um, October 11th study session.
Great, great.
Late summer in the foothills is kind of into November.
And the opposite is saying that we were going to start on October 11th at the.
Yes, yes. Study sessions and basically it is, it's, it's a, um, um, a reference of multiple study sessions beginning on October 11th.
Right.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. You got my email and my phone number.
So let's go ahead and take a look at the Coons House gas at one time. It's really nice that, uh, be, because of really Tim's hard work. And then Julie and Gabriel's additional work on cleaning this up. We have a very much smaller looking document that's nowhere near as terrifying. That is the final measures reflecting all the comments from our previous meetings about this. So there shouldn't be any big surprises in there for anybody.
And if I could break in the, I went through and I just changed the italics back to regular. Took the crossouts, eliminated them. I made sure the tables, uh, somehow they had gotten garbled. And, uh, so I went back to the original, uh, July memo to get the tables in the way they first appeared. Um, the, really the one thing that I actually changed, uh, since our last meeting was just on these footnotes such as the one on, on page 14, where the consultants said which consultant worked on what component. I've added language saying that, uh, in this draft, the commission itself has reviewed and amended, uh, the, the, the measures so that we don't give the false impression that, that it, it's all, uh, all, uh, the consultants' work. Uh, so, but other than that, and I think there was one typo I found in what I, what I typed. Um, uh, this is, as far as I can tell, a clean copy. Um, and Julie somehow worked some magic to get rid of the logo.
Gabriel, um, worked some magic. To get rid of the logo.
And, uh, so I do believe that this is what we, uh, have, uh, concluded. Uh, is our proposal to the, uh, to the Board of Supervisors. And then this statement that, uh, Michelle and I worked on, um, is, is to try and bring the supervisor up to speed as to what, what has happened and what this current proposal is. And what I'm trying to get across is that we have, we're trying to meet the, the goal that's set in the general plan of 40% below, uh, the emissions level of 1990 by, uh, by 2030. Um, and we're straining to do that, but that, uh, it is, uh, it's being done. Our intention is to do it without bankrupting the county. That, that if they have to pursue the funding, if they don't get the funding, we, we have still satisfied the requirements of the general plan to come up with a plan that if it were fully implemented, it would, it would satisfy the goal. Um, and then I've taken there a couple of measures that are, I think will particularly be subject to controversy. The TR1, which is the, uh, zero emission vehicle adoption, uh, and.
TR.
And TR5, which is the off-road equipment and vehicles. And I anticipated some concerns from the, from the Board of Supervisors and tried to show how the concerns I had at least, uh, have been dealt with, uh, a lot with the requirement of funding. Uh, and a lot of, uh, well, the, like with measure TR1 with the, the zero emission vehicles. We are satisfying what the consultant said as far as the number of vehicles that need to be served by charging stations. But we're not requiring 751 charging stations particularly. Uh, we're leaving that up to the determination of a plan that would be established under this. Um, and whereas I think the consultants were pretty much saying that we needed 751 of the 240 volt slow, uh, chargers. Um, this plan will come up with a, um, combination of what, what sort of charges we need, where they should be. And including in this, the, uh, uh, the private chargers. Uh, because I don't know about you, if we're going to have a electric car, I'm going to have a charger in my garage. Um, and that should be a part of this plan. Um, again, dependent upon funding and assisting people with the funding and et cetera. Um, okay, I've gone on too long.
So, and the other item that's in here is CS1 because that's something the planning commission added from whole cloth. You know, it was not part of, in its current form, not part of the consultant's proposal because they didn't believe that we could quantify sequestration on natural and working land. So, so that's why there's some additional comment there. So I think our, our main goal today is just to review this and review the wording and make sure that we're all comfortable with the wording. I think we all agree on the general content, but we want to be respectful to the supervisors and not come off as lecturing them about what the right thing to do is. Or, you know, that is their decision. They are the final decision makers, but we want them to understand why we are suggesting what we are suggesting. So that, that's really the, the main point. So are we all comfortable with this? Because it's going to represent all of us when it goes. It's not going to come from, this is Commissioner Ladish's recommendation to the board.
Well, I, you know, I think to begin, I appreciate both of you working on this. And, and I appreciate the caveat that, you know, if funding doesn't occur, then, you know, we're still striving for it. I don't know how comfortable the other commissioners feel. We've talked about the fact that some of this may be out of, it's not only funding, it's whether or not the grid's going to be able to keep up with what we're asking. Is there some reservation on the two of your, your parts by not adding something like that into this?
We did include that in the measures that we specifically talked about that.
Oh, okay.
So about the reliability or availability. And we have some exceptions in there for certain things. But I think that that's, we also talked to the consultants a couple of ti, uh, meetings back about having some overarching language that talks about the need for, um, a grant writer to go find the money for these. And things like those overall concerns and needing to keep up with the state's.
Right.
Requirements. There's a lot of stuff that's really not going to be up to us in the end.
In the end.
Anyway.
And again, and this speaks somewhat to that point, what we need is a plan.
Yeah.
A plan that if it were fully. If it were fully implemented, that's all we need. But right now, that's what we're, that's what we are aiming for is, is that. And well, it's the question, uh, whether if the consultants, uh, say, oh, you've changed this in TR5 and therefore you've dropped by.
Right.
Four metric tons and we only had a 212 metric ton cushion of satisfaction going into this. Um, uh, then we might have a problem. And that's, as Michelle pointed out, that's one of the main reasons we have gone into great detail in our sequestration, uh, provision is that we believe, we've, we've adopted a lot of, uh, language from the Butte County, uh, plan. And the Butte County plan with the sequestration was quantified. And, uh, I have, I communicated with their consultant and they said, well, look, there, there are two parts of the plan. Uh, one had to do with soil, uh, treatment, uh, to increase the efficiency of that. So I moved what was the soil efficiency, uh, provision from, uh, the Butte County plan to the existing soil, uh, provision in, uh, the consultant's last, uh, proposal. Um, and then the other part of the, the, the quantification was for the quantification of sequestration, uh, with natural and working lands. And that's, that's where we need to have the consultants, uh, increase our cushion, uh, for what we have, uh, in satisfying.
No quantification for that at all from the consultants yet because they haven't seen the final doc, our final proposal yet.
And this brings me to a question. When, well.
Now.
When are we going to?
I did, I did send a, a copy of a markup to them. So they are currently reviewing that and they will get back to us.
Well, I'm concerned that they're going to get back to us before we have our meeting with the Board of Supervisors and all this is going to be completely outdated. So, um, when do you think we're going to actually meet with the board?
Well, I mean, I, I, this question's coming up and I, I have, my advice to Gabriel has been that we wait for them to, at ASAP, um, quantify based on this, you know, work that you've done. And get back to us. I don't know, um, what's happened. There's some, I know there's meetings between planning, HAG, the consultants, and Angels Camp. I don't know, um, what's been discussed with respect to the date for the board. I hope, I assume from what Gabriel is saying that the consultant's aware that they are being asked to do a little bit more quantification. Um, I, you know.
But the problem is, is and then, then. But the problem is, is then, then if we say this, this is a fine statement, it'll be totally, it'll be quite out of date.
Well, Commissioner Lattish, not necessarily. It would really depend on whether or not the consultants agree wholeheartedly. Because one thing they've always told me is that as long as we do not tweak percentages, that, you know, we will still be able to keep our metric ton savings. But sometimes, um, the language is in the details. For example, the, the issue about rather than, uh, doing something specifically, we're saying we're going to pursue, uh, pursue funding to do it. They may interpret that a different way than we would. So, uh, what, it's nothing as firm at this particular time. I think I may hear back from them as early as tomorrow so that we'll, we'll get a good, we'll get a good understanding of where we are. And if it means that, um, and I, and I talked to county council about this. Was it yesterday, Julie, that we talked about this? Uh, and, and her position is that this is our document and that we have final authority as to what the document includes. And if we want to stick with the language of pursuing funding, so be it. It's not for the consultants to say, or, I mean.
Well, I don't think there's a problem with that.
Because I don't have a position, just to clarify all this. My, I did, I spoke with, with Mr. Elliott yesterday about some of what he was telling me was happening at some of these committee meetings. And the consultants, we are dependent on the consultants for the quantification. So one of the questions that came up was if the consultant feels they need to make a change, can they make a change before it comes to the board? And because we already, because this has to come as a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the board, what, what I have recommended is that the final measures as drafted by the Planning Commission go to the board. And I think that this document is perfectly adequate in terms of explaining the measures that we have. I, the, if the consultant decides we're not going to make it, we have, they feel they need to recommend some additional changes, we can recommend those in red lines. And, and it's correct that this might be out of date only to the extent that the board is willing to accept the changes. But the board needs to see, here's what the Planning Commission recommended. This will help the board understand that we do need additional work from the consultants. There is a little bit of an unknown, uh, that we're waiting for the consultants to wrap up. I think the other thing that I'm trying to clarify, it sounds like there's been, I know Angels Camp attends these meetings and I, I believe Angels Camp, I, as I understand it from Mr. Elliott, you know, and I understand this is a small city. They would like to try to piggyback off of some of the work that we're doing. It's not clear how much of what we're doing is actually going to be easy for them to use right off without having to do additional editing. And what, and I know we've all looked at the scope of work of the contract that the consultant, um, has with CAG and it is very clear in there that there are two separate plans anticipated, one for Calvares County, one for Angels Camp. And what I think might still be getting a little bit confused is that we don't need to be tied to Angels Camp and shouldn't have to be tied to Angels Camp, even if Angels Camp would, would like that. If that, I don't know that that's what they're saying, but if that's what they're saying, I think it needs to just be clear to CAG and the consultants that we have our own, our own version. And if they have, if Angels Camp needs to do something different, which requires customized calculations, that is a separate piece.
Different to any way because they're starting from a different baseline and.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you're absolutely right. And, and the comment I got from Angels Camp has to do with, uh, our changing the language which refers to countywide to unincorporated county. They, they felt like their studies and their, their plan, uh, kind of talks in more general terms. We are breathing the same air, whether they are in Angels Camp or we are here. So they might want us to maybe reverse that language regarding unincorporated county areas or just county in general, which would include them as well. Because in their language, I, I, I'm just reporting, I'm just reporting what is being said.
Right, right.
You know, just, I'm just reporting what is being said. I haven't, you know, we're not, uh, so, and I told county council that they had made, uh, that observation. Another observation that they made was that some of the descriptions regarding oak woodlands mitigation was too prescriptive. It sounded, sounded more like an ordinance level type rather than, I don't know what the difference would have been. I mean, we don't have an oak woodlands ordinance at this point. We aren't working on one. And so, uh, and they're not saying you can't have, uh, anything in that category. They just felt like it was such, at such a detailed level that goes beyond what the scope of this kind of document might be. Mostly appropriate for an ordinance, but they felt like, you know, we kind of whatever.
But we were taking it from the general plan.
Yeah, I mean, that's true. That's started, I mean, we were cautioned a while back that there's a lot of controversy going on as to what the oak woodlands ordinance will be.
Right, right.
And we better stick to exactly what's in the general plan.
Right, and that's what it is.
And word for word.
Right.
This is what's in our general plan as required. And so that, I just, I just, I don't know.
Absolutely, I, I, I don't.
This, I fully agree, this is our plan.
It is our plan.
It's our decision what, I mean, our, the county's decision is what it is. Our plan, we're only obligated to satisfy the emissions levels for the unincorporated areas of the county. We are, we don't control what Angels Camp does and we're not responsible for what's generated within Angels Camp. And so.
But why would it matter if we did include them and have them?
Because they have their own plan that could have different requirements. And while we all breathe the same air, we only have authority over what happens within the unincorporated areas.
But could they choose to adopt ours?
No, they have their, they have to have their own plan. They are different municipal, yeah.
We, we couldn't say you must put chargers here, here, and here.
But, but I, yeah, I, I think this is a moot point. We have understood this from day one when we both received the first set of measures and they were identical. And Angels Camp went through and started editing theirs ahead of us. And then they very clearly told us that they planned to piggyback on ours and they were going to trail us in the adoption of the plan so that they could leverage work that we were doing. That's their choice. I just don't think we can let what they choose to do or not do, what they choose to edit or not edit, or adopt or not adopt, really influence what we're doing. We are out ahead of them. That's what they wanted from us so they can see how much, uh, controversy is the outcome of this. So, but at this point, I think we just have to plunge forward with ours and not worry about what they are doing. Plus, we just really need to get ours done. We're all just so far behind schedule.
And I, I, no, I did exchange, uh, we exchanged copies of plans. They gave me one of theirs, uh, which looks like this. I gave them ours, so.
And that's been out for a while.
Yeah.
From the very beginning of this process, um, at least it was my clear understanding from the consultants that pursue was an action word. I mean, I'd almost have that as one of, uh, you know, above my door, doorway as words to live by, uh, that pursuing funding is sufficient to count.
To quantify, necessarily to quantify the same level as implementation. I think there is all sorts of gray area there.
And that's the only thing that's a red flag to me is they're not going to like that.
Well, I think they will say that it's an action and that the measure can be quantified. They might not say it can be quantified at the same level as the actual implementation.
Though their last quantification was after a lot of pursuing.
Yes, we'd already done that in a lot of.
We just, we just kind of missed a few places.
Right.
So I'm, I'm not concerned about the measures being out of date. But the statement that we're considering is a statement as of the current conditions. And is, is talking about the, the quantification and this sort of thing. That I'm concerned that we'll, we might have to come back again and, and amend that.
Well, we'll, we'll see, we'll see how much, uh, change is recommended.
So my suggestion is let's conceptually look at this. Everybody's had a chance to look at it. We can get the other commissioners' take on it.
Yeah.
It, you know, is this the right thing to be doing? I, I think we do need some introduction to the Board of Supervisors of what we've been doing for quite some time now. And, uh, you know, this seems pretty comprehensive. So it's just a matter of how, like, I have a couple of places where I would suggest minor wording tweaks. It's nothing major. I, in general, I agree with this and agree with the approach. I think possibly we don't do a final approval today. We keep it on our agenda and just roll it to the next meeting until we do have the quantification back from the consultants and kind of know where we are.
I agree.
Unless this is something that needs to go to the board right away.
I think that the, the goal or the, the, everybody's idea was that this was now going to go to a joint meeting of the board and the planning commission. So I don't know that anybody will want to hear that we're going to have another planning commission meeting on it before. I understand that there could be a simultaneous situation where.
That it wasn't going to go to the board until we have the quantifications back, though.
I thought that's what you were saying.
I, I, right, but we, I didn't know that we were going to have an intervening planning.
We don't know when the quantifications are coming back.
Right, so, but I think what, what the plan was is once we got the quantifications back, we would schedule a joint, um, board and planning commission meeting at that point.
When we get the quantifications back, I don't know if you've read through all this.
I did.
It would be, this is a statement as of now.
Right.
What the command, planning commission would say to the board if we were meeting with them tomorrow. If we get quantifications back and they say, hey, you're right, uh, you know, sequestration, you, you've got a nice big cushion now.
They're not.
And, and it's just wonderful, uh, what you're doing with, uh, with, uh, the off-road vehicles and this sort of thing. There'll be, there'll be need, need to be changes to that.
That's not going to happen, though. They're not going to come back and tell us that we have a huge cushion. So I think if anything, anyway, I, I don't think we need to worry about that. I think we can have this pretty much way to go. But if we get the quantification in time to take a look at it, then by, we have the opportunity to tweak this. If we do, if the timing works out, I don't know how long it's going to take to get it on the agenda for the Board of Supervisors or where those meetings are going to fall.
I mean, maybe they'll, right, maybe we can have, if we, if we get the quantifications back and it's thirty days to get it to the board, we can do one more agenda meeting.
And, and if we can't, we can't, then, then we go with what we've got and we deal with it at that meeting.
No, we will, we will get the quantification back. We will get the quanti- quantification back, um, sooner than later. So it just depends on what do we want to do with the quantification when we get it? Does that mean, are you willing to go back now and amend some of the language in there? I mean, these are just hypothetical questions.
No, he's talking to the measures, I believe, Gabriel is.
Right.
No, I think we just put, that we just roll that in, the commentary from the consultants and it's something for all of us to discuss at that meeting.
I think the question today is if we were meeting tomorrow with the Board of Supervisors, is this the statement?
He's working on a lot of different things.
If we were going to meet with the Board of Supervisors tomorrow, is this a statement you would want to?
Exactly.
My only concern, and I appreciate the hard work, um, but it makes me chuckle is on page two and then number four, you know? And, and maybe I'm misinterpreting what I'm reading, but, you know, we tell them there are no dairies, there are no slaughterhouses, and yet they come back and say, well, we need to have some measure. And, and it bothers me because it, it speaks to the validity of their other work. I mean, if they're just coming up with numbers.
It doesn't, and we've been through this, this is a done deal. We should not spend any more time on this issue. It's in our baseline, it has to be addressed. And if somebody was to come to us with a proposal for dairy, then we would have in our plan the appropriate response to it.
So Commissioner Schmentz, you that you weren't here during the inventory.
Okay.
So that you, but you weren't.
Oh, I wasn't here, okay.
No, no, no. It wasn't, we were talking about it in almost every meeting.
Yeah, it's been beat to death.
Really, the reason I brought, that I put in this subpar paragraph for, uh, two reasons. One, I think the Board of Supervisors should be aware that this has happened.
Well, they are because they also had to approve that.
But.
They might not remember.
Then the second thing is that we use it and, uh, on page five of our statement, proposed statement, um, use it as an example of, well, the consultants have, when they don't have any local, uh, data at all, they'll look to a state program, a state inventory and allocate, even though we get the results that we had at number four. And here, uh, we have opportunity to quantify the sequestration and we actually have local data that the, uh, the agricultural commissioner has the types of crops, the acreages and that sort of thing that, uh, and including timber that, uh, they can use to quantify. And I think it's the same sort of data, I think, that was used in Butte County to quantify their, uh, natural and, uh, working land.
So it doesn't skew our numbers, you're saying?
It, it does skew our numbers, but actually it's helping us because by putting a measure in there that says if we had a dairy, these would be the requirement.
Right.
It, we're getting to say that we're, we're preventing this future or removing this existing impact that we already don't have. It's helping us in our quantification. It's frustrating and I think particularly frustrating to those of us who have. Keep coming back to this. It keeps cropping back up. So every time we see it, you know, we're like, but we told you there's no dairies.
The consultant's explanation is this is the best possible, uh, information source we had available to come up with a census of livestock in Calvares County. And what we're saying to them is that you have a good local data source to consult with in order to come to the quantification of the sequestration.
But, but this isn't, it's, this is not the only item. It's just the most cut and dry, black and white item. We don't have dairies, there's a number in for dairy cattle. However, there are many other items in that baseline that were apportioned from something else or based on cell phone data that they had to extrapolate to. So there's just a lot of that in the baseline because nobody was gathering that data back in twenty eighteen very specifically.
As an example, why there, there, there was a table in one of the inventory documents that showed that, uh, between twenty ten and twenty twenty, there was a five hundred and thirteen percent change increase in the number of acres covered by evergreen forests.
In the beginning, Kelly brought up that this could be off by up to in the ninety percentile.
Yes.
I mean, to me, I don't even know why it really is because if we don't have that. But anyway, we did what we did and it is what it is.
Because the quantification is what it is, but the measures will improve the situation going forward, regardless of what the quantification actually is. I mean, that's the bottom line. We have to have a plan. We have to show how we are trying to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And an element of that plan has to be a quantification that we all know we're not capable of doing and it can't possibly be truly accurate. It's just some metric that they can use to say, yes, you've met the requirement or not met the requirement.
The thing that I have a problem with is that they use these, this.
The thing that I have a problem with is that they use these, this data to instill fear in people, and I don't like that because if you're off by ninety, ninety some hundred percent, it's just.
Well, we're, we're not off, we're not off anymore. We've, yeah.
So using the same metrics, there's, I mean, we're still off, we're way off.
Yeah, we know, but it, but we might be off in both directions and who knows? We just don't know, but there's nothing we can do about it.
So, so the three of you believe that the work that you have done with the original report and modifying it and asking questions has really taken some of that, well, I just got a rubber, I, I just have to cookie cutter this amount into this county, even, even though it doesn't apply.
We did not do that.
No, I mean, I mean, the consultants.
No, no, you didn't.
No, but I mean, it sounds like the consultants.
An example is that consultants were assuming that this fifteen thousand zero emission vehicles by twenty thirty were all going to be registered within the county. Um, that didn't enter in, into their quantification, but it, it, that fifteen thousand became the figure. And what we have done to make things more reasonable is, uh, we've, we've kept the fifteen thousand number for the vehicles, but we recognize that they can be, uh, what we're dealing with, those vehicles emitting greenhouse gases. And those are tourist vehicles, those are registered within the county, they're second home.
Right.
Vehicles, et cetera. And, uh, and we've also recognized that you have to look at every type of charger involved in order to service those fifteen thousand vehicles. And so, yes, I think we have, we've, we've injected reality into some of the, the basic statistics. Uh, and, and by shifting from the number of chargers, which I think were two hundred and forty volt chargers mainly, um, to number of vehicles and determining just which chargers and where they need to be and this sort of thing, um, we've, we've injected reality into that situation.
I, I think even more so, and you have been here for a lot of this toward the end, but not in the earlier piece, so, is that we have tried to make it match our actual rural community much better than the original measures did. I think that's the, that's the, where most of our efforts have gone and to try to take credit where we could for our strengths.
We didn't just accept it.
We avoided it.
Which brings me to my very first edit on page one of this proposed edit. Now, you guys don't have to agree with me, but if we look in paragraph four, it says the starting basis for the document. Okay, so if you read the first five pages and the last two and a half pages are solely the work of the consultants, which that language is solely the work of the consultants, but it is, those measures, while we provided input into previously. So it's not solely the work of the consultants. It's just that, that's the solely, that, the final wording of the consultants, but it incorporates the comments made by the planning commission in earlier.
What, what would you suggest?
I, I would just, yeah, I just think we want to say that the first five pages and the last two and a half pages are the work of the consultants. However, it incorporates the comments and concerns provided to the consultants by the planning commission in earlier hearings.
Okay, I think maybe, uh, uh, instead of, are the work of the, or, the wording of the first five pages and the last two and a half pages are provided directly from the consultants after.
Yes, after incorporating or responding to comments and concerns from the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay, now.
I just didn't want it to appear exactly as, as Michael was saying.
So wait a minute, okay, let me actually get this. The wording of the first five pages and the last two and a half pages are the work, are, are provided by the consultant?
Mm-hmm, are as provided by consultants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess the wording is as provided.
Mm-hmm.
By the consultants after, after what?
But, but incorporate or.
Or.
It can be a separate sentence, it might get kind of long and say, but that, um, the content of the measures incorporates earlier comments and concerns expressed by the planning commission or ex, includes responses. Or, or the, the measures respond to.
I wouldn't say measures because the measures are what's between these parts, but, um.
So the proposed wording from the consultants responded to earlier comments and concerns expressed by the planning commission. We don't need to be detailed, I don't think.
Concerns and suggestions. Okay. So, but keep the no revisions at this point have been made to the, no revisions to these entries have been made.
Exactly, yeah.
Do you want to have anything in there like at this point or the sort of, is that, is that sentence still good?
I, I think we leave it for now.
Fine.
That we don't know.
No, yeah. Okay.
And the next place, I'm trying to not pick away just at preferred language.
Yeah.
Um, but on page three, the final paragraph, if it was up to me, I would completely eliminate the first sentence and just start with the factual A twenty twenty-two air resource board. And then, and if you go down to the third line, I would take out the, the sentence that begins at the end of the third line. You know, with various state and federal programs, EVs will become much more affordable than they have been. Again, that's, that doesn't matter, that's our opinion, that's our hope, that's our.
Well, it's, it's, it's a softening of the effect upon the constituents of the board of supervisors.
I just think, though, that they're aware of it and we could, we could start with, with funding, measure TR one would provide encouragement to vehicle users.
Then, but forget the, the more affordable because?
Yeah, just take out all of it because it just seems to me as open to argument about, because should state and federal programs withdraw some of the tax incentives, they will not become more affordable. And that, the phasing out, and we just don't know, we can't.
If anybody disagrees with what the chair is saying.
Objection to remove.
Can I? I don't have an objection.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, if you have, if you have any objection to what she's suggesting.
Yes, exactly. We want you guys' comments. And really, everything else, I, I think is, is acceptable just the way it is and provides the information that we would like the board of supervisors to have. So, but I'm open to suggest, because I've read it a lot of times.
What's the final wording then on that first page?
What I'm getting is, uh, the wording of the first five pages and the last two and a half pages is as provided by the consultants, but reflects, uh, concerns and suggestions from the planning, previous concerns.
Yes.
The wording of the first five pages, I got that far.
The wording of the first five pages and the last two and a half pages is as provided by the consultants, comma, but reflects, I'm doing this as a, the, reflects earlier concerns and suggestions by the planning commission. How's that?
Yeah.
And so that last sentence kind of says the same thing then, doesn't it? That the rest of the draft has, the text, proposed measures have been reviewed and often amended by the planning commission. So we're saying, so are we saying two different things there?
Yeah, well, we are saying the July seventeenth.
Okay.
The letter, we haven't touched the first, uh, five pages and the last two and a half pages.
Okay, okay.
So, but the rest of it, the meat.
The meat of it, we got.
The meat of the sandwich has been, uh.
Okay.
Chewed over considerably.
Okay.
Yeah, basically, so those are the areas that where we made lots of changes.
Yeah.
To it, it wasn't just a word here, a little pursue item.
I think that, I mean, the point I, that we wanted to make was that, okay, we let the, let the consultants have their voice for these first five pages and the last two and a half pages and their tables and et cetera. We're not messing around, we're not trying to play with what their tables showed or anything of that sort. Um, this is what they've.
Okay.
What they, what they've provided us.
I think, uh, the measures, the actual discussion within the measures is pretty technical for the most part, trying to explain all of the background information that Commissioner Ladish dug out. And I, I feel like it does a good job of explaining what's going on there.
So, uh, is Commissioner Ladish going to do the edits then, or do you want?
I'd be happy to do the editing.
Okay, because you are the originator of the document.
Yes. The first two and a half.
He's the keeper of the, the word document at this moment.
Yeah, okay, I, I will, let me send that.
Yeah.
Okay, and do the other commissioners have any suggestions?
You have covered them all. Quite adept.
Good. Okay, well then.
All right.
I wish we were a meeting with the board tomorrow.
Uh-oh, I'm looking forward to hearing whatever we hear.
I, I.
No, no.
We have to skip, we have to skip.
I would suggest that we add today's date at the top of the statement.
Okay.
So that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
It in time for right now.
That is true. So with that happy conclusion to that item, do the commissioners have any reports? Commissioner Parker is reporting that he'd like to go to Belize.
Yes, he is. Not within forty years of July twenty-seventh meeting minutes. So, right, we have a whole new assignment.
So do you have any plans for this afternoon? Perhaps you just have to listen to this.
It's, it's quite enlightening, I'm sure.
Okay, um, and I, I just, for, for the two commissioners that weren't involved, I did submit this cleaned up version to counsel and the planning director and the chair. Uh, we're going to have to go, so if they saw anything that I didn't catch or that I was playing around with, they'd have a chance to, uh, to say something about it. So, um, I think, I think we're, and I think it's really important that we realize, especially when it starts, somebody starts saying, oh, your oak woodlands thing is too prescriptive. This is our plan. You could put any adjective. And, and we do. And, and we've, we've worked hard at it and we were, I'm, I'm proud of what we've done to, uh, to try and make it a feasible plan and to make it so it would satisfy the, the plan, the, uh, general plan. So, um, I'm not susceptible to somebody saying, oh, that's, I can't say that. But, you know, we, and, and I, I want to say, and it sounds as if we're, we're just anti-consultant. We aren't. Uh, the, the meetings we've had with Rincon, uh, participating and the response, they were very responsive to, uh.
Yes, they were.
Questions that I raised in the margin of, of, uh, of response to their July seventeenth memo. Uh, and, and I've been quoting basically from those answers, uh, today. They, I think, I think our relationship with the consultants has improved and, uh, and it's, it's a joint project, but it's our plan. How's that?
I, I think you folks have done an excellent job taking the advice of the consultants when you didn't create the MOU at first, at hired these set of consultants, if I'm correct. If this is COG, this is really, these are COGS consultants, as I understand it, Julie. And, you know, so we didn't have any hand in talking about, unless we did, what are expectations? So you've guys done a great, you've done a great job taking a set of expectations that you didn't create and a plan that you may not have agreed with the direction it went in and create, have created a countywide plan.
We do have to recognize COG were paying for it.
Oh, you're standing up paying for it.
Yes.
Well, no, no, I, I do, and I, I guess we appreciate that, but I mean, we were part of the conversation. How much is it, by the way?
That's how you'll feel about most county governments and city government.
Before we close, I'm just going to stress that, that, uh, the language of that sentence we were dealing with on the first page, uh, that we say, uh, the language of the first five pages and the last two and a half pages is as provided by the consultants in their July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three letter.
Well, you're changing it, so that's a good, I think that's a good edit.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm suggesting that change.
He's staring at it and still thinking on it.
I'm sure he will be doing that for us.
Exactly.
So, Gabriel, I just have one question for you. Uh, when I go home to review the July twenty-seventh meeting, um, there was a piece about it in the newspaper.
Oh.
And it talked about the controversy and then there were, do you ever hear back from folks that aren't in favor of something that, that is proposed? Like this cigar lounge, I mean, do you, or do you continue to hear comments like that?
Uh, we, Commissioner Schumante, we hear comments prior to the meeting, and some would post comments online, and every comment posted online I do get to see. Uh, but since the decision, uh, has been made, I haven't heard any other comments since. Now, if there happens to be a problem, then it'll become a code compliance issue and we'll hear about it at that time as well.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'd have to say that I sent it out to the Murphy's businesses what the decision was just because I had sent out the initial notification. And, um, I didn't get any comments back from anybody complaining about it. Everyone seemed to feel like, well, that was a good compromise.
It was a good compromise, it was a good compromise.
And they're open now and doing business?
I don't believe that they are open, but I did see things being delivered, their equipment, and it looks like they're working on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, is it like across from grounds, is that where it's located?
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay, I think so.
And when I looked at the place, I just couldn't, the front patio wouldn't have qualified for any smoking at all anyhow. But we.
So see, Julie, I probably could have voted on it. No, just joking, I.
I do want to say that the newspaper covered it well. And I don't remember who, who the writer was, but it seemed like it was a pretty comprehensive article and pretty even-handed.
Oh, good.
So, do we have a planning director report?
Uh, yes, I do, and it's a short one. Um, we approved an administrative use permit for a cannabis distribution business um, at, uh, 320 George Reed Drive in San Andreas. This particular location used to be a dry cleaners. And we're trading dry cleaning for cannabis distribution. So that's, that's the only item that we have approved. And I told you, I will be bringing these items before you as to get approved at the administrative level. So for your consideration. Now, this decision, uh, is, um, appealable to the planning commission within 15 days of the issuance of this, of this notification. And, uh, so we'll, we'll see.
And are we scheduled for an October 12th meeting?
It was actually scheduled in the agenda as far as, um, any regular items. Stay session from October 12th to October 12th. It's you agree, right?
And, and I think we should have a potential discussion item of this.
Right.
Oh, yeah. This would be a standing item, uh, for the next meeting.
We'll have, we'll have an agenda.
Absolutely.
Cancel the.
And I may have comments back from the consultants one way or the other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Since we already have that I, that day set aside, we probably will want to run our zoning onto it just because that might mean we'll be able to drop a date at the end.
Yeah.
I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Yeah. So Gabriel, I, I have a question when.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, no, I, I apologize. When you issue an administrative use permit, do you also circulate that ahead of time to the community members for input?
Yes, we do.
And you didn't receive any, any negative comments regarding the dispensary, um?
Uh, this one I just read?
Yes, yes.
This decision was rendered, uh, on the 26th.
Okay.
So, so then notice this would go out and then maybe we'd get calls or letters or something, but we haven't gotten anything yet so far.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify, on greenhouse gas, you, did you want to have the continued informational item?
Yes.
So just continue what we have right now.
Exactly.
And just put it on there as a continued study.
So we could change this statement if we wanted.
Hopefully, we're going to be in front of the board quickly. It's not going to drag on.
Yeah, and, and, and I think the, the, the biggest part is how do we schedule that joint meeting with the board? Because their meetings are quite, you know, extensive with all the consent items.
Yeah, that's just amazing.
And then, uh, and then we have to figure out how do we do the seating if it's a joint meeting? Uh, where does the planning commission sit and, and so on and so forth, but that's, you know, we can figure that out.
Right.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's going to be on their agenda, so we're going to be at their meeting.
At their meeting.
In front of, in front of these.
I know, we've done them in the past. They, they. Have to sit with our commissioner.
Yeah.
You know, this.
What do you want to do too, you know? Or we have two tables and the commissioners would be sitting across from the board members.
Whatever supervisors want.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Then we are adjourned at 11:38-ish.